We will call this meeting to order. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. I will ask Councilman Kim Micky if he will lead us into the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. I want to welcome each of you all here to the Georgetown City Council Meeting for Monday, October the 13th, 2025. We're here to conduct business for the city of Georgetown, and that is the purpose why we are here. Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Kirk?
Here.
Mrs. Hambrick?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Minky?
Present.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, approval of the minutes in special meeting on October 9th, 2025. You should have received those minutes. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Lesby, excuse me, Mitchell Lesby, Lesby Mitchell, thank you. I'll get it right in a minute. And second, by Ms. Hambrick. Are there further questions and no comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise, nay.
I was staying, Mayor. I was staying since I wasn't here.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on, item four, the receipt of the check registry. You all should have received that. If you have received that, please show by raise your hands. Let the record reflect it was shown. At this time, we have public comments. Item number five, a reminder that public comments are comments. You will have four minutes. Madam Clerk will time you. At three minutes, she will let you know that three minutes has elapsed, and then after that time, you will have one minute. Then at that time, at the end, she will ask that let you know, and we ask that you please take your seat, and let's be mindful to give others opportunity to address this council. First is Chief Seth Johnson.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. This is just a reminder for the Fire Prevention Parade, the best parade in America, coming up this Thursday night at 6:30. The lineup will be around 5:30 on military, so council, mayor, everyone's invited, the public, obviously. If you have some special arrangements or want to participate, if you can email, I guess, Wendy, and then they can get in touch with us, and we can make sure all the logistics are handled. So, just a reminder, 6:30 Thursday night.
Thank you.
So, that means if you want to ride on the fire truck, you can do that. Driving it is not going to be an option, so there you go. So, let's move on. Next, we have Mr. Dan Holman, process improvement and opportunities. Mr. Holman.
Hi, there, Dan Holman, Georgetown. Yeah, so I just said, process, opportunities for process improvements of the city could improve processes. So, there's four things, two things on the agenda tonight, and then two other things. So, for example, this, the shelter at Marshall Park, I think it was $346,000. It looks like a good thing to build, and that's, I assume that that's approximately the budgeted amount, I'm not sure, but still, that could be built for half that price. If we look, it's a, I believe it's a 44, it's a one-story, 44 building by 16 feet. So, we're, you know, we're wanting to construct affordable housing in town, and so we, the city could kind of set a model of how do you build things affordably, like are there creative ways to do it? That would be a way, so our, the way that we bid stuff out is a process that needs improvement, like smaller companies need to be invited into the process, and that, I believe that that, we could cut that price in half, and if you multiply that by multiple projects throughout the year, it adds up to a lot of money, and sets an example, to Ball Homes, for example, about how to build things cheaper. Another item that's on the agenda is the Lanes Run, you know, another company has bought a lot at Lanes Run. So, this BP1 zoning is not the best process for a business park in town. It's not dense enough. Like Lanes Run, most people who go through there wouldn't think that it's filling up, but yet, it is filling up, and a lot of it is grass that you do zero-turn mow, or mow with tractors sometimes, and pay a lot of money over the years. This thing should be made more dense than BP1, and probably fit, you know, two businesses on some of these lots instead of just one, would be something to look at. And then, another item about the affordable housing report was given at the last special call meeting, and, so, yeah, so Michael brought up an idea, that was a great idea, about, it's a little out of the box, this Quality Inn is for sale, over on the north part of, you know, north of Toyota, near the Motel 6, and up near the Pilot Station. It's, I think, $2.4 million and 56 units, some of them are already apartments that people are living in. So, I've been to all of Candace Whitehouse's 8:00 AM meetings every month for the last two years, and we've read three books together, and this kind of thing is what people do in other cities, you sometimes will purchase a hotel and repurchase it for housing. So, that idea that Michael raised was a great idea, and I think a team should be sent to at least analyze it, go over there and look at it and analyze it at least. And then, regarding, some of you may have gotten the issue about the water company, there was a meeting last Tuesday, and most of the time, I think, people don't attend, there's not a lot of guests attending the meetings, but some people, I've attended the last two water board meetings, and just happened to notice by random, just by randomly noticing that, like, after everybody left the room, and the meeting was adjourned, the board members hung around in the room, and the doors ended up getting locked, and they were talking for many minutes, for quite some period of time, like, sitting, because I couldn't get back in the room. People noticed, like, why hasn't anyone come out, and so I went into the door, and it was locked, and then you peer into the blinds, and you can see them in there, and they're sitting in their chairs, a period to be meeting, for like, a long period of time, and, so they've acknowledged that was an open meetings oversight, like, illegal violation of the Open Meetings Act, and something needs to be remedied, like, we, you know, other than just a slap on the wrist, and they should basically recreate what happened at that meeting, what they talked about. Everyone in that meeting should write an account of what they saw and observed after the meeting was adjourned, so at least we know what they were talking about in this, in this illegal violation of their meeting. Thank you.
All right. Is it Javencio Tousen? I'm sorry if I butcher your name up, I am so sorry.
Yeah, you're so far.
Okay, thank you.
So, my name is Javencio Tousen. I'm a Realtor with Rector Hayden Realtors, and homeowner here in Georgetown, and, you know, it's been like, a dream of mine for a while, to have, like, you know, chickens in my backyard, like, turning, I have a really good-sized backyard here in Georgetown, but I, I think I'm still within the city limits, but I'm not sure. And so, there's like, a shed that I could buy and convert into, like, a place where just hens, no roosters, I don't, we don't, we don't need that, we just want eggs, essentially. And so, moving here from Lexington, which Lexington seems to be very accepting as far as, like, you know, chickens and things like that, I used to work with Seed Leaf, and seen different things, and so, I would just love to just have a shed in my backyard, and just have hens in there, and, you know, take care of them, and raise, you know, grow my own food, I have some raised garden beds that I have, and even feed some of my neighbors, you know? If I, if I get approval from my neighbors, like, that this is okay, you know, you know, would that still be a problem with the, with the city if I'm not making a fuss, there's no, you know, early morning rising and all that stuff? Would that be much of a fuss, so? And I hear that you guys voted a couple months ago, that it was ruled out, and that is dead in the water, but I don't understand, because this is Georgetown, you know? This is Georgetown, we have farms, and we have all kinds of stuff, there's lambs just down the road from me, so, it would be great if, you know, something could be done about that. But, yeah, is there a reason why? Can anybody tell me why, like, that it was ruled out? I know we're kind of becoming suburban rule.
That's a conversation that you might want to have with me sometime.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Would I have to, need to call?
You can set up a meeting, my executive assistant, I will give you a card before I leave, and I'll give you my card, and we'll set that up that way.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Is there any others that needs to be approached here? All right, Mayor's comments. I've got a couple here to want to do, but first thing I want to do, I want to make a correction for what I did this morning, in, in, during my presentation, I talked about the hazmat and also the barackat, so I want to make sure that you understand that the barackat is the one that we're actually, council, we are purchasing. The hazmat is the one that the Kentucky Homeland Security Grant is paying for all of that, so, I kind of got them turned around, but, you know, there is a difference between the barackat and the hazmat, okay? So, there you go. So, I want to make sure I got that out. Next item on here, before we do another special presentation, is that Mr. Bill Parker, he's here. Mr. Parker, if you will step up here for a little bit here, I'm going to talk about you, so, you know. Bill Parker have been a volunteer for our sister city for many, many, many years. He has kind of been the host when we had brought the delegations over, he has, he has Ubered them around, all over Georgetown, and did it, I mean, get up early in the morning to go pick them up, and get up early in the morning and take them back to the airport. And, so, that type of sacrifice should not be gone unnoticed, and I want to make sure that you know how much the city of Georgetown appreciate what you have done. That being said, I've got to make a, I'm not taking my clothes off, I have to change, and I need to make a change of rope here, and, for something, and to do this, one of the great things we got when I was in Japan is, I got myself a happy jacket, so therefore, this is what this is, and, Mr. Parker, I've got a happy jacket for you, because it's like that, you, what you have done, and it's like giving it to the masters when you get the green jacket, I thought you were there, I will give you a happy jacket, how about that?
I'll throw one up here, so.
I like to kind of snipe him, you know? I think we're going to words that, but, go take that for you, and let's put that on. I'd be like, yeah, poor woman, make me this correct, you know? You have to, you have to do the green jacket, like, or the mask, there you go. You ready to put your arm there? I know. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
I had to do a lot of diplomacy to get that jacket, I'm going to tell you that right now, but I got it, so, that being said. Again, thank you, Bill, for all you do, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, I enjoy it.
Thank you. And thank you to the, the committee that put this together, as for, as we host them, when they came to Georgetown, we got nothing but praises on that, and some of the people are here, so, all you people that was on that, and also, some of their here in support of the nine that went with me on our excursion to beautiful Japan, and it was a trip of a lifetime. Like I said, we tried to make a deal here, but we couldn't get it to fall through, so, but, Tom, we thank you for being back with us, but. All right. Thank you again. Our next item on the agenda, and it's something that's dear to my heart, and, you know, Dr. Hammer and I go way back. I'm talking about when I first got here, and when I graduated from Georgetown College, one of my first summer jobs was working at the Georgetown Self-letter Pool, and it was the only pool in town, everybody, if it was anybody showed up, for a dollar, it was the best babysitting job in the country, and if you were adult, it was a dollar fifty. And parents would bring them there, and on a bus, and just drop them off, and then we had them for about seven hours. But, when I got there, one of the first person to actually put me on his wing was Dr. Horace Hambrick, and he showed me the ropes, what I'm supposed to do and what I'm not supposed to do. Holding a kid's head underwater is not the idea of lifeguarding, but, it's just that, along with Louis Wolf and his sister, Mary Birch, and, you know, and it, so it goes dear to my heart of that, and, and he's always been a champion of people. If you look at his legacy, how he dealt with people, I would say he probably had thousand, 10,000 or more patients, and everybody talks highly of him, and I thought that we cannot let this go unnoticed, we want to make sure that this man's legacy stays the test of time, and that being said, we would have proclamation in honor of Dr. Horace Hambrick. And I'll ask Madam Clerk to read that proclamation.
Proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Horace P. Hambrick, M.D. Whereas Horace P. Hambrick was born in Lexington, Kentucky, and grew up in Georgetown, Dr. Hammer was a part of our Georgetown community from childhood, and participated in Boy Scouts, church activities, and high school sports. He graduated from Georgetown High School, and went on to medical school at the University of Louisville, where he earned the Spurling Award for being the most outstanding pediatric resident in 1982. Dr. Hambrick proudly practiced medicine for 39 years in Georgetown, and was the founder of a free monthly medical clinic, went on 19 medical mission trips, and served on the Board of Trustees at Georgetown College since 2015. And whereas Dr. Hambrick was a lifetime board-certified pediatrician, and volunteered in the Department of Pediatrics at the University of Kentucky, he was a volunteer at the Health Department and the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky Community Advisory Board. In 2025, Dr. Hambrick was awarded a Doctor of Humane Letters by Dr. Rosemary Allen, President of Georgetown College. And whereas Dr. Hambrick selflessly gave his heart and his time, and shared his medical intellect with the healing arts, his unwavering compassion and dedication to the lives of children and adults in the community will be remembered for decades to come. He was an inaugural member of the Scott County Hall of Fame, the recipient of the Jim Reed Community Award, and a Kentucky Colonel. Dr. Hambrick will be remembered as the doctor who always came with a smile, wit, and resolute faith. He was known for being purposeful in everything he did. And whereas Dr. Hambrick was devoted to his family and enjoyed the simpler pleasures of life, he lived with courage, compassion, and a gentle demeanor, exuding unconditional love for all. He will be remembered most for his hopeful perspective, healing touch, and how he served our community faithfully and with love. Now, therefore, I Bernie Jenkins, Mayor of the City of Georgetown, the Georgetown City Council and its citizens, do hereby honor the memory of Horace P. Hambrick, M.D., for his dedication to the city of Georgetown over the course of 39 years of service to our community, so proclaimed this 13th day of October, 2025.
Counsel, thank you all for supporting this idea, I think that it is best served that we honor this man in that fashion, I mean, 39 years, and, I mean, he has truly been a public servant, that's what, he typifies that, what a public servant is, and, and I want to make sure that, that we recognize that, and, and all the works here, and again, he's, he's close to me, and he meant a lot to me, and, and me starting out, and for 25 years, I ran that pool, and with duct tape, I kept it going, so there you go. All right, next item is number seven, it's going to be the council committee reports, and I think we have police. Okay, you, okay, so, you want to, we'll kick it the next time, if we want to, we'll kick it the next time. All right. Item number eight is our City Hall renovation project update, and now, see, we have you all here, and, all right.
Hello, hello.
And again.
All right, we got everybody here today.
So, if y'all want to introduce yourselves, because I'm sure some people have probably tuned in, and probably don't remember who your names are.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Hunt with Lord X. Sargent, the project manager for this project.
Kate Sidwell with Codell, Site Superintendent.
Mike Stacy, Codell.
And we are here tonight to give you an update of what's been going on over at City Hall. So, next slide, just to give a brief recap, more on the administration side, obviously, I think we've, we've said this whole time, there's a lot that goes into renovation, particularly historic renovation, so as you can see, we have 143 questions that we've answered thus far on the project, we have nearly 200 submittals that we've reviewed, so every piece and part that is going into this building, we have reviewed and sent back. We have 11 supplemental instructions that have been released, which are all non-cost-change clarifications, and then we have eight bulletins that we have also released, which are the changes that we ran into that did have a cost with them. Next slide. Again, just looking at the, the changes to the scope of work, I believe the last time we were with you, we approved change orders nine, 10, and 11. Since then, we have the restoration of the original arch window that we found hidden in the wall, we find lots of hidden things in this building, that was another one, so that one is pending approval right now. And if you guys have any questions, please feel free to stop me. Next slide.
Can we go back?
Yes.
So, what's the current under review under submittals?
I'm sorry?
What's the current under review for submittals?
There was, that one actually has been returned since I updated this, but that was the waterproofing for the front elevation, where we're doing the below-grade waterproofing. Going into our general update on the exterior, as you can see on the rear side of the building, our stair tower is going up, we had the stairs in, now we are enclosing that stair tower. And then, on the front, you can see there on the, the third floor windows, where we've added our shoring, where we're, all of the stabilization that we need to do of that window to make sure, or of the wall, excuse me, to make sure that we don't have any continued issues, that work is, is underway right now.
I have a question.
Yes.
It seems like the weather could get in there without plastic or something, there's open, it's open to the.
So, if we've got, typically, weather's been pretty good as of recent, we do have periods of rain, we do have plastics and plywood that we're shoving in on the inside. The way the cables are coming through, we've got cables coming through the window that are anchored to the, to the north side wall, the interior wall, which is holding the structure to the, to the building, it's kind of tough as far as weather goes, so, we've got a couple little pieces to tie up, which we expect to be done this week, and then it can all disappear, and windows can go back in.
Okay.
I'll answer and follow up, just.
Yeah.
We haven't had any issue with water.
Okay.
Our biggest concern is when the weather changes.
Okay.
Right, so the humidity control, and, and all of the domino effects that come along with, you know, the change of weather when winter comes, that's our, that's our largest concern to date.
Okay.
Next slide. So, just moving around to the other sides of the building, we continue to have windows being installed, and we have done a lot of the exterior masonry repointing along that east side. I'm sorry, oh, no. Next slide. Just to give you a quick look at some details, so the, the new metal cornice work has been installed on both the tower and the building, and if you look on the roof of the tower, you'll see our decorative attic vent that we have reinstalled, that will be coated to match the roof panels, once those are installed as well. Next slide. Going through on the interior, so, the way that we have been doing, obviously, there's been a little bit going on on each floor, but for the most part, we're sort of working our way from the third floor down, so, on the ground floor, we have a little bit more to do there than we do on the upper floors, but there are also fewer finishes that need to go in on this floor, so it sort of balances out. So, looking at the ground floor, we still have some drywall work continuing, we have some ceilings that still need to go in, but we're just about at the point where that can start rocking and rolling. Moving up to the first floor, you can see the first floor is a little bit more finished than the ground floor, and so you'll see that as we go on, each floor is a little bit more finished than the last. So, to the far right, that is your new council chambers, so it's a much bigger space, the little image sort of in the left corner of that is looking back at where the council bench will be. On the, the top middle image, that is the lovely arched, original arched window that we found in the, the wall cavity that we're going to restore, along with images of the hallway and the council lounge. Next slide. Obviously, there's been a lot going on on the second floor, this is where we found the majority of the wood floors, as you can see, those have been refinished, we have lights that have gone in, and the drywall work is sort of at the finishing stage now. All of the brown pathways that you All of the brown pathways that you see are protective walkways, so that we don't damage the floor. Next slide. So we have, I think you guys have seen this before, we've reinstalled the vault door, but you can just see it now, it's starting to take a little bit more shape with its finished condition. The restrooms are starting to get finished out, and the one place where we have a little bit more to do there is what will be the meeting room, that's the top-left image, and that is going to come along pretty quickly.
It should be, yeah, very quick.
You can sort of see, well, maybe sort of see closer in the image that you have in front of you, we have some shoring posts that are, is helping to support what's going on above in the third floor, so that is part of why the space isn't as finished yet, because we had that shoring that had to go in. We didn't want to damage anything. Moving on to the next slide, we have wood floors being installed on the third floor, that's probably further along. I took this picture about a week ago, so, but you can see, the third floor is really our most finished floor at this point, which is very exciting. We have the wood floors going in, ceilings are in, lights are in. Next slide. Again, you can see here with the wood floor going in, and then sort of zooming out to the big open office space, our lights are in. You can see a little bit of the skylight, although I can't quite get a good picture of all of it, so you only get a little corner this time. Next slide. The picture on the right is sort of that doghouse connection back to the stair tower, so that is now getting finished, and then the restrooms are also in progress with those finishes. Next slide. So talking about the structural stabilization for what will be the mayor's office, the next couple slides are just what we have showed you before, kind of where we had the cracks and where the main issues were. Next slide. So you can see on both the walls, we had these cracks that we needed to deal with. Next slide. So again, on the right, that's sort of the shoring on the exterior that is helping to brace the wall back towards the building. And then on the interior, the image on the left, you can see the steel that has been installed, you can see the cables that are coming through the windows to help support that shoring as we're installing the steel structure. Anything to add?
As far as installation, everything went much smoother than anticipated. All of your three bolts are in. Like I said, we just have a few little odds and ends to wrap up, and that work will be
And actually, if you notice now, which, again, I took this about a week ago, so things happen very quickly, the metal plates are on the outside of the building, you can see those now above the windows, those will get coated to match the limestone. Next slide. Just gives you sort of a close-up of what the steel looks like, and then again, our plan is to fur around this steel with drywall. It will create sort of a picture frame of the windows on both walls, and then it will leave the ceiling, that egg and dart molding up at the top of the ceiling, and the wood base and the plaster walls exposed, so you get a little bit of original history and new modern finish in the same space. Next slide. So the water infiltration obviously has been a big thing that we've talked about this entire time. We have been continuing to keep an eye on it, particularly as we opened up that front to do these repairs. You can see the images on the left, we now have a very large ditch out there to be able to get ten-plus feet down to waterproof that whole front side of the building. Any questions on any of this before we go to the next slide with the cost update?
What about schedule? The scheduling for...
Schedule, we have that coming up.
Okay.
Next slide. So just to give sort of overall look of where we are from a cost standpoint, again, when we were here last, I think we had this through change order eight or nine, so we have added all the change orders, change orders in here to date. The current change order subtotal is four hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents. That leaves three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, fifty-four cents left in the contingency. We still, again, just to emphasize that, we are taking everything out of that contingency, so the final project cost is still that twelve-point-four-nine-nine number. That cost has not increased at all. Any questions on...
Here's a question, and I maybe do not remember this, but did you say something about you were taking out of this project, something to do with the parking lot?
Yes, so that was actually part of change order eleven. So what we did is we combined a couple of things together. So change order eleven had the additional waterproofing out front, so there was an added cost for that. In addition, there was a credit back for removing that asphalt work out of the project.
And how much was that cred, credit was, what was the cred? You said what you removed out, how much was the value what you removed out of the project?
I think it was roughly forty-two thousand.
Okay.
My credit.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are we on pace to complete the project without exceeding the contingency?
We should be. We have, we just got a submitted cost for some repairs at the bay window. As we were installing the windows and making some changes to the metalwork, we found some rotted wood, so that needs to be removed and repaired. And then the metal needs to be repaired, so there's a small cost associated with that. Right now, that's projected to be less than ten thousand dollars to get that fixed. And that is the only cost on our radar right now.
Okay.
So, and then whatever is left in the contingency, again, would go to the FFNE to outfit the building.
So do we have an outline of all the equipment, all the materials for FFNE?
So Stacy's been working through our cooperative purchasing contract, she's been working with, is it Omni or Sourcewell, one of our reps, to get vendors that are approved through that contract, so that we can take the floor plans and have meetings with the vendors. Essentially, they'll essentially measure your space and determine, okay, for this common area, this is what we would propose, and obviously, there are preference choices that would need to be made, but we're working on getting options there to understand pricing and understand needs. Obviously, first goal is to make sure all public engagement spaces, anywhere the public will be interacting, need to be completed first, and then offices first as well. There are some, you know, growth spaces for future offices or future, you know, plans, those would be last place. Obviously, we still have all of our equipment and furniture from the old design. You obviously don't want to put new, new building and old furniture, but, you know, we'll be resourceful. So the plan is to take the floor plans from each floor, offices identified, and kind of start marking up costs there with vendors, so that we're ready to kind of hit its end, so.
Okay, next slide. Just give a brief look at sort of upcoming tasks. Again, that pricing item that we talked about, that limited replacement of the sheet metal and the deteriorated wood substrate. As far as construction items, it's really continuing with everything that is already in progress, continuing with the window installation, the enclosure at the stair tower, wall framing, which there's just a limited amount left, drywall installation, there's going to be a big push for the finishes, ceiling tile, actual ceramic tile, lights, stuff like that. We'll begin to install the interior doors and the glass office walls. We'll continue with the waterproofing work at the entry elevation, and once that is done, we can start on the utility work in the alley, and then complete the metal roof and cornice installation, which there's very little of that left to do on the tower. And then I'm going to turn it over to these guys to talk a little bit more specifics and talk through the schedule.
Schedule should be popping up. There we go. All right, so obviously with Elizabeth's presentation, thank you for that, lots changed since the last council meeting. We have increased crew sizes, started working some weekends here and there, and as we can expedite some items, we're continuing on the second, third floor with finishes and planning in the really, really near future to phase down to the first floor in the basement. Schedule-wise, we're looking, as of right now, eleven-twenty-five, twenty-five for a substantial on the, or punch on the first and second floor, or third and, second and third floor, and then on the first floor and basement, we're looking at the first of December. Like I said, we are continuing, we will do what we need to do to get there. If that means doubling, tripling crew sizes over time, we have some plans in place to get that completed for you guys. And I'll leave it open for questions.
I'll just add before you start questioning, there's a couple of things, number one, I was placed here after the last council meeting to also help. It's a very dangerous assignment, being from here as a second home. I mean, you know, I could go down the line, the connections, I'm a former councilman's daughter, so, you know, I was like, really? But I've been here for a month, there are a couple of challenges, obviously, on the historical renovations, and there are a couple of things visually that don't help us out. The windows from the exterior, the digging around from the exterior, obviously don't give the presentation that November is possible on two floors, but it is definitely reachable, but there's also some of those continued challenges in historical preservation, like finding a bay window, or finding the arch window. So, you know, appreciate your patience, and open it up for questions.
So what is our date? What is our date?
Final completion at twelve-twelve.
Okay.
That's about the same as last time you were reporting.
It's the same, yeah.
Okay.
So do you have all the materials you need?
We are still waiting for the windows that were discussed in the last meeting. Mike and I are tracking it daily at this point. We don't have a ship date as of yet. Like I said, if it comes to the point where that's the last thing we've got to do, we'll put them in, slap a bow on it, turn it over to you guys.
It's hard to show up every day and without having something they need.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's what we do every day. But we're also, in some cases, tripling crews since the last council meeting, so the amount of work that's, I wouldn't, you know, Kate and the crews, what's happened in the last thirty days is pretty solid, and we just need two more months of that.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Crisp?
Yeah. Will there be another presentation from you guys between now and December twelve?
I would imagine so, yes.
We'll give you whatever update you guys want, you just let us know when you want us here.
Okay.
And we can work that out, we can get that schedule for you. Perfect. Any other questions? All right, thank you as always.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
All right, item number nine is the Lanes Run Business Park Land Sales Contract, one-nine-five Endeavor Drive. Good evening. Sir, good evening. Let me...
Jack Connor, representing your business park, Lanes Run Business Park, Scott County United, pleased to present a contract, or tell you that I presented a contract to the mayor last week with an earnest check, the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That check was for the lot that, as you've noted, the northwest have a little aspects there. It is four-point-nine-nine acres, so that's the property in phase one, so that's twenty-five thousand dollars per acre. The Business Park Authority met last week and looked at the contract and approved the contract in order to be transmitted to you all. So that part of the process is complete. The project is, in this particular case, it's a project that has been applied for a Kentucky Business Investment Act consented. For that reason, I've given it to you as a NICS code, three-three-three-six-one-eight. I've done that a number of times, the last one was two thousand and twenty-one with Universal Piping. That, let me just give you the definition, I'll give you the definition of NICS code, but I will tell you what it is. It is a engine manufacturer, they use a lot of CNC machining as well as welding, it's a local company, so they're looking to get out of a less E position to go into an ownership position at Lanes Run Business Park. They have filed a KBI application, as I indicated. If the application is presented on the thirtieth of this month, hopefully, it will be approved by the Cabinet for Economic Development, and I can't tell you what the incentive is at this point in time. I can tell you that the overall capital investment's one-point-five million dollars. The company currently has six employees. In order to meet the KBI, they would have to have at least a hundred thousand dollar capital investment and create ten new jobs, which they will do per their application. As I said, the incentive itself has not been determined by the cabinet, they negotiate that with the company. Average wage today, between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars per hour, so that translates to fifty-two to seventy-two thousand dollars, which does not include any time overtime. I will also add that that number is interesting, if you recall, we did the proclamation for manufacturers month, and the overall average for them was eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for manufacturers across the board, which is about forty-five dollars per hour. Be more happy to answer any questions. I would say, I don't anticipate there'd be an issue with the project in any way, shape, or form, since it does meet the requirements for the BP-1 guidelines, so be more happy to answer any questions.
No questions? All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion made.
Motion made by Mr. Crisp, do you have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Menke. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten is item that we put on the, as a standalone on the agenda, from our meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, our work session and with planning and zoning and others, we talked about some things, so I'm going to kind of go through the takeaways, and also, you were given a sheet here, I think, of that too. So as discussed in our council meeting, excuse me, in our last work session, here are some of the four takeaways here from that. Conversation with Transportation Cabinet or elected officials about issues with local traffic studies and potential solutions. Number two, form a steering committee with members of Planning and Commission, City Council, and public. Number three, consider quarterly joint work sessions, excuse me, sessions with City Council and Planning Commission for steering committee to give updates on committee work. And four, review Chapter eleven, implementation and prioritizing action items. Compare, contrast between Planning, Commission, and Senate Council responsibilities. Those were the action items that were taken from the work session. At this time, it is now, what is our next up? This is the discussion we want to talk about, where do you see this going from here? And here's the idea behind all this. You know, oftentimes, you hear people talk about things, you know, they put up, they got some action items, but those action items then put on a shelf somewhere, and it's never addressed, so we're going to keep this on the agenda repeatedly until we figure out where we want to go with this, because I don't want to get, this gets lost in the shuffle. If we put some action plan together, we need, as a council, to figure out how we need to address this and put this in motion. Now, it's not going to be something done overnight, it'll take some time. So this is the time where we get some discussion, how do you perceive... How do you perceive that we need to, to progress for this? So I'm going to open this up for some discussion and, and go for mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
I had, you and I had talked, and I had to ask you if you would put this on, because we agreed on that, that it needed to be on the agenda as a regular item, so it's consistent, so we'll stay with it, so we'll, we'll push through it. And I have probably been the one yelling the loudest since I've come back onto council about zoning problems that we're having in town and issues and things like that. And it was nice to have the joint work, work session that we had a few weeks ago. It was nice to get together and to do that. So on the development of the council committee, on the action item, the steering committee, but what I would love to see with this council committee, I'd love that there be a committee of the council first, to actually let the council come together in the committee, form of committee, and talk about the issues that we see, the issues that we hear from our constituents, the issues that we think would work, and start to look at this sheet, and let that committee then go into the steering committee for the larger committee. And that's what I would like to see, if the council is in agreement with that.
Any other discussion on that?
That makes sense to me. You know, we have to get started somewhere, and it's overwhelming unless it gets narrowed down. And then so, a representative group of the council narrowing that focus down and updating us regularly, seems like it would be a good place to start before, so that when we combine the two, or three, I guess when you count the public, it's three entities, that we would, we would have some priorities of where we would like to see things started. And I'm sure that planning and zoning would have priorities as well.
Absolutely. Well, then the reason with, with stressing us go first is because we're the elected body. The Planning Commission is not. We are. So ultimately, we're the ones that take the heat from it, pros and cons, we'll take the heat from it. So we need to relay what our constituents are telling us and talking to us and what they are seeking. And we need to understand what can be done within the law, what, if the law needs to be changed, as to what we can do, that we do that. But I think it's best for us to start, get on a page together, and then we can push out and push in with the steering committee. And then I think maybe we can get some things done.
I think that's a wise approach. I was heartened at the meeting that it seemed like fiscal court also had many of the same issues that we have, but perhaps they will start with the same method. I'm, I'm not trying to prescribe for them, but they may also meet separately first and come up with, with theirs, and then the steering committee as a whole can go over what we both have come up with. So I think that's a great suggestion.
I would also say that, you know, the city council can do this, but I think fiscal court needs to be on the same page as well and do the same thing at the same time.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, I think, I think that's good.
I think, I hope they do that, and I think they probably, maybe will take that lead from us to do that, but the problems we have in the city seem to be louder, and so we've got to proceed regardless of whether they do or not, but I think they probably will.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Crisp?
Oh, yeah. One other thing, I think we should eventually identify what the scope and responsibility and authority of the committee would be. Would it be more of a liaison? Would it be more advisory? Would that committee have any direct dealings with planning and zoning? Wouldn't have to be, you know, determined tonight, but something to think of the next, next little bit, too.
But again, I think that where we, you know, from here, this council is, you want to actually do a committee within yourself here to talk about the, the concerns that you may have and hope that the, the fiscal court would do the same thing. And then from there, I guess we can talk about what next steps are, you know, how do we put this together, this committee together, all that needs to come, you know, that's, it's going to take some time. So, but, but let's make sure that we're doing this. We're doing it a step-by-step approach, and then making sure that we're doing it in, you know, in a way that will, will fit the needs of this council, but also hearing what our constituents says, and also being able to fall within the lines of whatever the state requires of us on that. Mr. Minky?
Yeah. So, Mayor, I would just add, the, I think we need to have a sense of urgency around this.
Yes.
This, this, a lot of times when you do committees of committees of committees, you just talk to each other and you don't get anything done. I, I like the idea that's proposed, but I would propose that we do it as a workshop for the entire council, and if someone does not want to participate, that's fine, but having a subset of the council just begs for more.
Scrutiny.
Well, not necessarily more scrutiny, but more time to ensure that you're getting input and consensus, and, you know, if something's not thought of, or something's not brought to the table, then it just delays the process. So from a purely process perspective, if you make this first step a workshop, that way it can, we can have that conversation and we can bring out exactly what you're proposing. We can do that very quickly, and then, at the same time, I think we need to begin looking at, how do we form that committee we talked about in terms of who's going to represent the council and who's, and have some standardization around that and some expectation of what the communication will be, so that we are truly talking as one body, and we don't get down the road and then need to go back and regroup, or hey, that didn't get brought up, and so, you know, it throws a wrench in, in the process down the road.
And something that's how, also, it's been brought, and I think talked with some of you, is that, you know, you need to have a time schedule, you got to have a deadline. You have to have a time, you know, you can't, you can't be talking and talking and talking. You need to say a date. Is that okay? By this time here, we're going to have this done. Then, once we get that done, we're going to move to this here in different phases. Let's, let's.
Well, that, that way we won't lose our sense of urgency.
Yeah. And Kim, I understand what you're saying. The only, the only thing that I would say different from that is, we, we have had some workshops, and we, you know, we have talked, and, and personally, I'm ready for a couple of people to dive in deep on this. And if it means doing it, I would love for it to be with the entire steering committee, but if it needs a couple or, a month or so for a couple of people to really dive in deep and see what our priorities are, I feel comfortable, having sat through several of the training sessions and talking about this, to let a couple of people on the council represent and, and go ahead and, with a sense of urgency, and start to move forward. I mean, that's just my thought on it. I mean, I came ready to say, let's, let's get a couple of people and get started.
I need to agree with that, Tammy. I think sometimes if you have too many people, nobody's fully taking charge or agency of it. And we need to take charge now, and I think if we ask for input and we give updates, whoever's in the committee, and ask for further insight from each of us, I think two, at the most three people could, could form a good group and get this moved forward more quickly than eight. I don't know.
And, and I would say, I'm just throwing this out there because we're just talking, but the, two of the people who have been the most vocal are Karen and Kim, and to me, that makes logical sense for the representatives from the council. And, I mean, that's just my opinion, and I don't know how we would do that, but it's a council-driven initiative, and for me, I, I feel like we would get a real good representation of the things that we're facing if the two of you all were the committee. And I don't know if we think we need one more, and, and I don't want to speak out of turn, that's just my opinion. So.
All right. Any other?
Mayor, if we had three, because actually, Kim and I would actually be good on the committee, because we have some differences of opinions. Yeah, really.
Karen, Karen, that's what I was thinking.
That's what I was thinking. You might be the third person, but, but actually, I think the two of us will be good on that because we do have differences of opinion. So if maybe there is a third person on there, there's nothing that violating any meetings laws on that, right, Mike? So if there's not, we probably need the third person on there.
If I may, if there's room for a third, I'm very passionate about the subject. I'd love to be a part of this, if that moves forward.
All right. Anyone else? I mean, like I said, you know, we want to open up to give everybody an opportunity to want to be on there, because, you know, so, all right. So, yes, go ahead, man.
We could be able to have a little more conversation about some of Chris's point you talked about. Like, you can talk about who you're appointing, but you might want to have a little more conversation about.
Right.
Exactly what they're going to be doing, and that conversation's going to help push things forward.
And I guess you're having, as to what, what is their, what is the charge? What are they, what are they, what are you trying to do here? You know, what, what are you going to bring back to report to this council? You know, you know, so that's the, the main thing, so. Just go ahead. Any discussion on that? Go ahead.
What I took from the meeting, the last workshop that we had, was, and I may be off-base, but what I took from what we did together as a group was, that was very important, was that we look at each and every one of the procedures, articles, that it was very important that we do that in a very timely manner because of a state law that had been passed, that if we have any, anything that is there that we, it doesn't say what we thought it really meant, if there's tweaking and text or change ordinances that need to be done. To me, it seemed like that was the place that we needed to start, given all the conversation that we had. And, and that's pretty comprehensive and touches on just about everything. And it, it also has to, it, we can't just go in and say, we want to change this because we don't like it. What we have to, we can't change anything until we get the entire steering committee. What we're hoping is that we prioritize, like, for instance, if that set is, you know, 100 articles, I don't know what the number is, then this committee might look at, let's get the top 10 and start there, and bring it to the council, and the council say, these are the, you know, report, this is the 10 that we're going to work on once we start the steering committee. And then we have to work together to make sure it follows the comprehensive plan, that it's legal, and so forth. But what I, if, if you want a pre-meeting before the big group meeting, I get it, but I think the only charge there, in my opinion, is to prioritize what we're, because the work needs to be done with the entire committee. And we're, we're just a part of it.
Yeah. One follow-up to that, Tammy, if I may, Mayor. Another big point of the meeting dealt with state, and we need to maybe have as a part of our goal, how are we going to lobby the state to change some of the things that are handcuffing, handcuffing and handicapping the efficiency of what, of what we can do as a council and as a fiscal court? The traffic aspect in particular. It was huge.
Yeah.
So I think that should be a goal of the, the committee.
Yeah. And I think to, to your point there, I think looking at or getting some exposure to best practices to be able to help facilitate those kinds of conversations, and, and, and that's, that's part of, I mentioned in that meeting, we had KLC that next week, and I did that. I threw that out there and have some contacts, and actually, we've, I've had a conversation with some folks that do work in Michigan and Indiana, and some of the practices that they have to help address some of the, the issues that we were trying to identify, especially on more proactive improvements that need to be made earlier in the process, so that we're not always behind the eight ball from a traffic perspective and those kinds of things. So things that we could do, not only with maybe helping with the state, but helping with other processes that, that we can control by ordinance here as well.
Yeah. I think the committee would identify problems that we feel that has been brought to the council over the years, see if there's any implementation that we can do to fix those problems, change those problems, look through the articles, to then take the articles that are priority, I think there's maybe 51 of them or something, so you're close, and then take those and bring those back as a priority to the council, then educate the council on what little we know about that, what we, little we will know about that, and then start to take that to the steering committee, if that's, sounds good to you all.
Well, back to council.
To the council, and then we'll take that as when we go to the steering committee.
So, let me just ask this.
Go.
We do need a sense of urgency. And so if we had two meetings of this subgroup, or three, and by the end of November, we were ready, and, and perhaps, planning and zoning does the same thing, and, and the fiscal court does the same thing, then everybody has their, you know, here's, here, here are the things that we'd like to work on.
Right.
And we all come together then. So if we put a six-week timeframe on it, do you, does that sound reasonable?
Actually, I could see the committee meeting a couple of times, meeting a couple of times between now and then, and then see if the collective committee can meet, like you said, the, by the end of November.
And, and I would say too, I don't know how to say this, just forgive me if it's too blunt, but we need to have a balanced perspective. And that's why, in my mind, it makes good sense to have the two of you, because you...
What'd you say?
And so, and so, what, no offense, Michael, but I don't want to, I kind of think, and that's just my opinion, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I want it to be down the middle, because we all have different opinions here. And I don't, I think it's very important that we listen to, you know, we have slow growth, faster growth, and it's, it's even, there's one of each, so.
If I may, I don't think the committee's going to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, a great deal of power or a great deal of influence, that they're really just going to be collecting information, bringing it to council. One thing that I think we all share is, we hear from constituents all the time, they feel squeezed, the taxpayers feel squeezed as the city grows. They're, not everyone is against growth necessarily, but they want to see smart, sustainable growth that helps improve everybody's quality of life. And I think most of us are really for that, but I don't think whoever's going to be on the committee is going to have much sway or power, they're just going to be collecting information, being a liaison and bringing it back, but.
After what Tammy said, we may need a referee. We may need a third person.
Mayor, we've.
The mayor knows how to do that.
You've got experience.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to stay out of that dark fight.
It, you know, it is a council.
This is you all's initiative. I'm going to let you all take the, you all the ones who want to brought this to the table. This is a, this is a legislative initiative on your part, and it needs to be in that arena.
Personally, I like the three. I do like the three, because then that gives a balance, I think. If, if we lock heads over something or the other, then you've got a balance, a third logical person. Well, and the council can always bounce it back. Yes. So, I mean, we, we, I trust that the three people will be able to knock it out, for lack of a better term, and then the council can determine whether or not we feel like it's a balanced approach.
So, what I'm hearing you all saying, that you, that the three, which would be Michael, Crisp, and Karen Sames, and Kim Minky, will, will do a deep dive into the 51 articles to actually figure out.
Number.
Uh, what is it?
How many?
There's only seven articles.
Uh, will you come up? Hold on, hold on. If you would come up and kind of, you got stairs on that, because that way we got, we go from seven to 150, and we still don't know where we're supposed to be. So let's, hopefully we get the right way here. So let's, hopefully we get the right way here.
Yeah, so very excited for the, for the work of the council and your willingness to undertake this project. To clarify, our zoning ordinance has seven articles that, that encompass all the development regulations on that side of things. Our comprehensive plan has an implementation chart that identified roughly 51 different items specifically to be addressed. Not each of those are planning related, but each of those implementation items would affect the zoning ordinance or other development regulations.
So Holden, while you're up here, is it all right, Mayor, if I ask him?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does this plan sound reasonable? I mean, I know, because you guys probably do the same thing and then eventually we're going to come together. Does this sound like we worked together in the meeting a while back and, and we all want to be moving forward together, so?
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to be careful speaking as staff on this. You, as elected officials, have a very important role to play in this. And as council member Tingle Sames pointed out, as that elected official, you hear firsthand in a very unique way that I, as staff, do not. With that said, the idea of moving fast is exactly what we would hope to see. Where I think we need to be careful is making sure that with the subcommittee formed here, with again, a similarly formed fiscal court, a similarly formed planning commission, that not too many decisions are made before it's implemented, with in particular input from the public as the public relates to that overall steering committee. The voices of the public will be very important in this process, as will the voices of this body, as well as the others. But as far as showing up on a Monday night and getting this ball rolling, this is fantastic. I love to see it, love to hear it. And again, as staff to the planning commission, if there's any way I can assist in this activity, I will hope that you will reach out to me.
Great.
All right. Okay, so, yes, go ahead.
I can't, I can't, I have to say it. I just, I think that we need, that we all have different ways of getting public opinion. And in the interest of working with a sense of urgency and working together, I think that we should be very careful about going out and stirring a whole lot of stuff up in the community. And by that, I mean, we want the public involved absolutely and we want the public on, some representatives on the committee. But to go out and to put it on Facebook and say, tell us everything you want us to do on this new committee that we formed, I think would be counterproductive. So that's my opinion. You know, we're going to do what we, we're going to do, but it's my opinion that that's not productive in this case, so.
Devin.
Sorry, just touching on a couple of things that were brought up. I mean, I think the point about Councilman Crisp, and then Emily echoed that about the intent of the group. And I hear she's using a lot of language and I know Holden's clarified one of them, but the implementation chart in front of you all with hopefully a little more user-friendly in this printed form, it's a lot to pack into a letter-sized page. So I think what I'm hearing from you all is that that document is, is one thing, and it was listed in the goals from the last meeting, the action items. Looking at that and zooming out and saying, here are the ones that are really important that we want to start tackling. And it, it's really helpful because it, it lists out the players who are involved. And there are plenty of them that is the city council. So bringing visibility to that document is a huge first step. So I'm hearing that that's going to be part of the conversation, not the smaller committee. But then Tammy, you brought up the state legislature changes and pivoting and reacting to that. And I know Holden, you and your staff have done a lot of work in kind of combing through, and it's more of a cleanup on those items as opposed to policy recommendations. So could you give an update on that so that we can, because that's one that can be tackled kind of tangential to this?
Yeah, so those are two entirely, thank you, Ms. Golden? Devin, yeah. The, the kind of distinction there is with House Bill 443 being passed that requires my planning commission to review things ministerially and have a clear set of regulations that if something meets it, it should be approved. My staff has come through and I'm going to look to my senior planner, Ms. Louie, back there. But we have forwarded to the city council a series of zoning text amendments that would address that ministerial application of the code. And I believe that you have access to that to begin looking through. That's where, when you said that it touches all parts, you were 100% correct. It's a very lengthy set of documents. Separate and apart from that, and then related to the implementation chart, is the policy level discussions on, besides being ministerially applied, what other steps, what other feedback have we received from the community? Where can those policy changes be made? But again, that is, that is a question that I think is at the heart of this conversation, but should also warrant its own discussion separate from some of the things that we're talking about here tonight. So that.
Yeah, I just wanted to cover that, that's going to be coming through. So that's, that's what I'd be ready for as this process unfolds as well.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, do we need to, do we need to make a, kind of a motion for the committee to form?
I believe you can do that.
Mayor, before we do that, there's going to be three here. Should we not talk to the judge first and see how they're going to form their committees? And have, have some sort of similarity between them?
Go ahead, Emily, will you say something?
So I think, just remember so far, the only conversation has been between the planning commission and the city council.
City council.
Okay.
Fiscal court has not been part of this conversation.
Okay.
So there's been, just generally it's come up that with our joint planning commission in a way that our zoning ordinance are written, you know, the, the regulations may apply to both, they may apply to one or the other. So that component of that conversation, that hadn't happened at all. So before we start bringing the fiscal court in, if that's something that we need to extend a, an olive branch or just make sure that they're aware of this conversation more directly.
Thank you.
And I'll clarify on that point as well. My staff has been engaged with fiscal court on a number of other ordinances that fiscal court has requested from that, which are specific to Scott County, where, as your legal counsel pointed out, there's overlap, there should be overlap. But at the same time, there are sections of the zoning ordinance as established that are discreet to Georgetown. A great example of that is your sign ordinance that is unique to this body. Fiscal court has their own. And so if it is the desire for me to engage fiscal court, and we have conversations all the time, but I, I don't want for a moment for this activity to be held up waiting for another group to make that decision.
All right, so at this time, I guess we could have a motion by someone to, to establish this, this subcommittee made of council members, three council members, and those councilmen has already been drafted, which is going to be Mr. Crisp, Mr. Minkie, and Ms. Sames. Is that what I'm hearing from this group?
I'll make that motion. More clearly than that?
Are we, are we good with that? Not, please let me know I'm in order here. So, so the motion has been made. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second is made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, so, and, and development of a council committee, we've done those two action items already, so I guess we can move on to the next one. First readings, item 11, a, the training incentive program ordinance sponsors Tammy, Lesby Mitchell, Kim Minkie, and Greg Hampton, revised since the first reading on September 22nd, 2025. Madam clerk?
An ordinance adopting an incentive program for elected city officials to obtain training related to city government. Summary, one establishes a training incentive program in accordance with KRS 64.5278 that offers annual financial incentives to the mayor and members of the city council for their participation in qualifying educational training related to the duties and responsibilities of city officers and the functions of city government. Two, provides for severability of provisions on effective date upon passage and publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Introduced in public or read the first time October 13th, 2025.
Thank you. Item P2526, budget amendment ordinance, sponsors are Tammy, Lesby Mitchell, and Greg Hampton. All right?
Yes, I wanted to just walk through for the public's benefit so you kind of know what's in the budget amendment and so that you have a chance to, to hear that publicly. The first budget amendment of the year typically serves a few purposes. Number one is to carry over any items from last year's budget for items council approved, but didn't quite get received in time to make it into the last year's budget that we didn't account for in the new budget. So that's the majority of this. And then there are a few new requests as well. And then the other funds outside of the general fund, it is mainly updating things like carryover project balances, grant balances. We make our estimate during the budget of where we, what we think's going to be left in that project or what we think's going to be left in that grant. And then in the first amendment of the year, we update that balance. So starting with the general fund, the majority of this increase, about 1.7 million of it, is carryover items that were budgeted and approved in last year's budget and didn't make it into this year's budget. So that's what this first amendment's doing since these items will be received during this fiscal year. I won't read all of them, but the two biggest ones, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the bear cap for the police department, that was something that was approved, order placed last year, but wasn't received by June 30th. So we need to account for it in this year when the bill will actually be paid. And the second one is the fire engine that was approved in December of '24, a while back. That contract had an original delivery date of six months, took a little bit longer, just got it in. So that is, bill will actually be paid in this fiscal year. So those are the two biggest things. And then there's a few just small things, purchase orders of things that were carried over from the end of the year. The new request, there's about 251,000 new requests. The vast majority of this is the Marshall Park restroom, and I want to talk about that a little bit. In last year's budget, the council set aside $570,000 for Marshall Park projects. And in your packet, you do have a little brief summary kind of showing where that came from. We used 286,000 of our ARPA money to pay for part of that. And then the general fund allocation was 283,000, so 570,000 total. The first project we did was the lighting project that the mayor talked about during his state of the city. There were some light poles that were in danger of falling, some different things needed to be upgraded. With the lighting system that they put in place, that was about 218,000. So that ate up a chunk of it. And then the second thing that we've heard from citizens is the restrooms at the football field. So the plan is for this to be a restroom and storage facility that's attached to the current concession stand at the football field at Marshall Park. So we have gone out to bid for that. Eddie will be presenting that contract for bid, but there's two things. Number one, there's a sewer line that has to be constructed. So from the sewer main ran up to the field, GMWSS presented their subcontractor to you all at a previous meeting, but we have on here tonight for you to approve their, their contract with us. That is about, about 155,000 for the sewer line construction and design. The bid for the actual restroom facility came in around 346,000. So we bid it twice. We bid it once, we got one bid that was 500,000. We bid it again through lean imaging, trying to get more local contractors. It was a local contractor that bid. Again, that'll be on for your consideration in a little bit later. So with all of that, the total projects for Marshall Park would be 753,000. So an additional 183,858 is needed if we're going to continue with the construction of the restroom facility as currently bid.
So the other money, the other money off of that, you said came from ARPA fund? So it's only $183,000 that we're having to take? Is that right?
The original budget, we had 283,000 out of general fund, 286 out of ARPA. That was the original budget.
Okay.
So we need an additional 183 out of the general fund.
To finish.
To finish up the restroom facility.
Okay, got it.
So that is the majority of the new request in this budget amendment now that we've gotten those bids back and know what our restroom is expected to cost.
And so we'll take that out of, we'll take that out of reserves?
Yes, it would be out of reserves.
Okay, gotcha.
The other large project that you'll see, again, something Eddie will be presenting in his section, is the Clubhouse Drive Bridge that we received the grant. So the grant will cover the repairs and constructions, but we've put out a request for proposals for the engineering design, and that's going to be about 52,000 that was not accounted for in this budget. So the constructions and repairs will be covered by the grant, but not the engineering portion. That is the majority of that difference. There's a few small things, a chase, small change order on the police recotta camera system to add a new camera by the evidence room, lockers, fire department. Since they did get their three new firefighters, they had not included portable radios for those firefighters in the budget, they had forgotten to put that in. When they're hiring their firefighters, they don't know yet if they're going to be certified EMTs. So out of the new recruits, about seven of them need to go through EMT class. That's about 2,000 per firefighter. A couple of new technology items, PD, switching and power refresh. I did confirm with Captain Lodel, they have a switch that's failed. So that is something that's an urgent need. The Fisher addendum goes along with, some of you all may have received on your city email some of those tests to see if you fell subject to the phishing scams. If it's actually truly from that program, you'll get a congratulations, you reported this is a phishing or a, you didn't. But there are actual legitimate phishing emails out there that we're able to report and this, they were just getting kind of sent to the IT liaison's email inbox and she doesn't have the capacity or tools to report those. So this will allow NetGain to report those for us. Additionally, we had some, just some adjustments on insurance now that our final invoices came in. Once we paid, we do our renewals in March, we don't get our renewals till the end of June. So our property was higher than expected, but our workers comp was a lot lower. So they offset each other. The last big thing in the general fund that doesn't cause a net effect on the budget, but we are creating a technology department for better tracking of those items. So just taking things out of the general government computer line item, because right now everything is thrown in general government, computer hardware, software, and just separating that out line by line so that the IT liaison has a better tracking. One new one, this one will be hard to explain, but I'm going to do my best. Our auditors, one of the things they did recommend to me, it wasn't a finding or anything in the audit, but in our audit, we have a budgetary comparison for the general fund. And we have non-cash transactions. So for example, when we lease a piece of equipment, we budget for the lease payments. And that's, because that's our cash, that's what we write checks for. But as part of the audit adjustments, to get our books to the full accrual method, I record lease proceeds and an expense for an asset. And they're the same amount, the net effect is zero. But what it does is when you go to that capital outlay item on our general fund budget, it'll look like capital outlays over budget. It's not really, we didn't write checks for that much, but it is just an audit recommendation. So you'll see on here the new ladder truck that you all just approved to buy with lease financing last month. It's a $2.2 million, so we budgeted for the lease payments, 400,000 for the year. But this is a non-cash budget item, so we're not writing a check for this amount. Lease proceeds of 2.2 million, fire truck purchase, 2.2 million. Net effect is zero. This is because it's, like I said, we operate on a cash basis, but we do bring our books to full accrual at the end of the year during the audit. And so this is just one of the things they recommended that we start doing going forward. So no checks being written, no cash being written for that amount, but it makes that budgetary comparison scheduled. So any questions? I'll do my best to explain. It is an accounting, just an accounting entry thing, but just wanted to go ahead and get that in there. And as we continue to receive, for example, any new vehicles we purchase through our enterprise fleet maintenance program, those are also leased vehicles. So as those come in throughout the year, in the mid-year and final budget amendments, I'll also be picking those up as they come in and we know their final cost.
So we don't need to do that for the existing leases that are there?
No, it is the first year. So the year that the vehi, the vehicle or leased equipment is reserved. Because in the year that you acquire it is the year that you report the proceeds and the expense for the equipment. And then every year after, you're just. And then every year after, you're just budgeting for the lease payments. So it's only in the first year that you receive the equipment. There is mud probably, but.
All right.
I'm going to look at Greg to help me if he, he's familiar with leases.
It's, it's one of those accounting issues where, you know, you, you've got a liability recorded, but you've got basically an asset there that is not being recognized. So they call it a right of use asset is a non-cash transaction. So it's just to make it balanced, so.
And we did book the assets in our fixed assets. They are there. It's just the revenue and expense that's associated when you first acquire it.
Mr. Menke?
Yeah, just one other quick question. So thank you for the detail. That's very helpful. And the detail around the changes of the specific accounts, but is there an overall status of the budget at this time?
I will be providing that at the next meeting. I had spoken with Greg earlier today. I told him I'm going to be providing that before, so we'll have that in order of presentation before the approval of this at the next meet.
Yeah, because that's important.
Yes. Yes, the first couple of months, most of our revenue is, especially in July, all of our revenue is pretty much attributable to the prior fiscal year. But I'll provide you an update on the end of last fiscal year and how we've done the first few months of this.
It's probably a little early to try to estimate any, any revenues or.
Yeah, I guess I was more, I was more interested in the expense side. To see how we're doing against budget. Since we're changing the budget.
Yes. Again, I won't, I don't believe there's anything in the other funds that jumps out. It is a couple of small new requests on dispatch fund. That's covered from prior year revenues in that fund, not the general fund. Updating beginning balances for MAP, LGE, drug fund, carryover grant projects, and just updating the city hall. Again, we already made the transfers for the city hall project. We're not transferring any additional money. It's just, I guesstimated 5 million left on the contract, and it's 5.4 million. So when we did the budget, just the timing of how the pay apps came in. And as Mr. Menke pointed to, I included in your packet just kind of a little, I'm happy to go over it with anybody individually who needs me to, but just an overview of the fund balance to show. For the '24-'25 budget, the adopted budget expected us to end with about an $18 million fund balance, actually going to end with around 23.6, as the mayor mentioned during the State of the City. So even with this amendment, if approved, we would still expect our projected fund balance at the end of June 30, '26, to be around 20 million. So still in better shape than we expected to be. And that's also about 4.8 million higher than what our 30% fund balance requirement is from the policy that council adopted. So still in good shape, and so I just wanted to kind of go over that. Any questions? I know it's a lot to look at, especially with the new non-cash items, but that's something you'll start seeing going forward in budgets as we adopt them.
All right, thank you. Stacy, if you would do me a favor, give him this card here. I told him I was going to give the card to him, so you can have it, and he can, and so you can, my information on there, and you can go and set up, and you and I can talk, and we can have an in-depth discussion on that, all right? We can do that. All right, Madam Clerk, if you will read the, thank you.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues are increased by $1,946,201.32. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $2,994. Lease proceeds are increased by $2,198,084. General government expenses are decreased by $619,781.91. Information technology expenses are increased by $667,159.52. City council expenses are decreased by $114.55. City clerk expenses are decreased by $114.84. Building inspection expenses are increased by $344.76. Police expenses are increased by $406,573.20. Fire expenses are increased by $3,427,884.22. Code enforcement expenses are decreased by $1,563.58. Public work expenses are decreased by $15,015.30. City engineer expenses are increased by $77,526. Community service expenses are increased by $15,000. Inter-local expenses are increased by $189,381.53. Business park fund, prior year revenues are increased by $2,646. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $5,292. Capital expenses are increased by $7,938. 911 fund, prior year revenues are increased by $23,690. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $23,690. Dispatch 911 expenses are increased by $47,380. MAP fund, prior year revenues are increased by $1,176,863.53. Capital expenses are increased by $1,176,863.53. LGE fund, prior year revenues are increased by $117,932.89. Public works expenses are increased by $117,932.89. Drug fund, prior year revenues are increased by $5,364.99. Police expenses are increased by $5,364.99. Grant fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $63.12. Local grant revenue is increased by $10,000. State grant revenue is decreased by $25,863.44. Federal grant revenue is decreased by $4,584.57. Police expenses are increased by $10,436.88. Fire expenses are decreased by $27,049.65. Inter-local expenses are decreased by $3,898.36. Capital projects fund, prior year revenues are increased by $434,958. Capital expenses are increased by $434,958. All ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time October 13, 2025.
Thank you. I'll give you a minute here to catch your breath here, and we'll, but we have item number 12, which is the second reading. We have two of those. We have the personnel ordinance amendment, and then we also have the property tax ordinance, which we had the public hearing on today, and that's with the 4% on that. So Madam Clerk, if you have, ready to go again?
Ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 2-60 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Personnel. Summary, one, amends Exhibit B of Section 2-60, subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to increase the number of CAD administrative positions from one to two within the Georgetown Scott County 911 Center. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, several military provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read the first time September 22, 2025. Publicly read the second time, October 13, 2025.
All right. You have heard the ordinance being read. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Ms. Hambrik. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Sames. Are there further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes.
Mrs. Hambrik?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Menke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
All right. Item 2B, a property tax ordinance, as you all know, this was the one that we had the public hearing on, and the public hearing as to that, and there was no written comment as well as any public comment. So at this time, I will have Madam Clerk, or who else is going to do it, read the ordinance, please.
Going to be some ventriloquism?
Yes, yes, do that, yes, good.
All right. An ordinance providing for making the real property, personal property, motor vehicle and watercraft tax levy for city purposes for the fiscal year, fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026 inclusive. Whereas the city council for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky is required by KRS 92.280 to enact by ordinance each year a tax levy on all real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and watercraft. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the following tax levy is hereby made for city purposes for the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026 inclusive, to which, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026 inclusive, there is hereby made a tax levy of 6.2 cents on each $100 of assessed real property, 6.2 cents on each $100 of assessed personal property, and 16.8 cents on each $100 of assessed motor vehicles and watercraft, which tax proceeds shall be designated to the general fund for the general operation of city government. Section 2, all matters relating to the payment of the taxes imposed on motor vehicles and watercraft hereunder shall be in accordance with KRS Chapter 134.800 at SEC. Section 3, that upon all taxes for real property and personal property levied herewith, which are unpaid on January 1, 2026, there shall begin to accrue, attach, and be added from said date a flat penalty of 15% onto the total amount of said taxes then due and payable through January 31, 2026, after which the flat penalty shall be 20%. Additionally, tax bills not paid before March 1, 2026 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to said unpaid taxes and collected by the city clerk treasurer. Should the real and personal property tax herein become delinquent, the city financial officer, the city clerk, and/or the city attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs, costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of the delinquency. Section 4, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 5, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law, publicly introduced and read for the first time September 22, 2025, publicly read for the second time October 13, 2025.
Thank you. Counselor, at this time, you have read it. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Hampton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Menke. Are there further questions and or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
No.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Menke?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hambrik?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 13, and Chase, you're on here for GMWSS, will take A, Lovo Incorporated for $15,600.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As I said, first purchase order is the Lovo, and this involves replacement of one of our variable frequency drives for our rights lane pump station that serves part of northern Scott County. So think of, that service area as West Woods Neighborhood Subdivision and anything north of that up through Sadieville. So that's the pump station that all that flow goes through and how that's the first leg of its, its journey to wastewater plant two. And so the, this is a budgeted purchase in our collections department budget, not specifically for this VFD, but we know these things will go out each year, so we, we do budget generally for replacement of a few of these each year. This work does include the equipment installation, programming, and startup. Just, I guess, for, as I have to understand it, but just layperson's term, the VFD, we see these in a lot of different areas, but for us, it makes us, allows us to efficiently, efficiently start and stop a pump motor better than a soft start. So we can control the voltage that goes to the motor, and it allows us to better control, therefore, the end result is the pressure and velocity of the water through our force main. So Lovo did have our low quote, you can see in the purchase order information, we did get three quotes. They were the low, and they do a lot of work for us, always do an outstanding job, so we'll recommend this for your consideration.
Motion, Mayor.
Counselor here, and motion is made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of item A, Lovo Incorporated for $15,600, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the reflector pass. Item B, Boykin Industrial Service Incorporated for $25,785.12.
Okay, this is for some building maintenance at our wastewater treatment plant number two. We need to complete some masonry repairs on five of our buildings. These are going to spot repairs where we have water damage just from ultimately the CMU block crumbling after a number of years, and mainly repair on the mortar. So what they're going to do on these mortar joints is go through, pressure wash all the areas, clean it out, clean those joints out, do whatever block and masonry, mortar repair they need to, and then repaint and reseal these, these areas for moisture protection. And so this is a budgeted purchase, again, with Boykin providing the, Boykin providing the low quote. Keep in mind, these buildings, these CMU block buildings built in the mid-'80s, and so they're starting to show some wear, but I feel like we've taken care of these as we've gone. So this is pretty minimal, and I think it's a pretty good bank for our buck for, for us to get this done now before we have more water damage, which will only get worse. So we are recommending this for your consideration.
Thank you. You have heard the request. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Menke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hambrik. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of item B, Boykin Industrial Service Incorporated for $25,785.12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Item C, duty construction for $389,967.89.
Pay application number 54 on our wastewater treatment plant one project. And this one is exciting. This one is special because today, as we know, is our contractual milestone for beneficial use, which means we put the, the plant, the new treatment process in service. And so I've got a few videos as they're, they're kind of scrolling through these two. They're just very short. This, let's see, the first one that he showed, that is actually, you're seeing water undergoing aeration process, that one right there, and our sequential batch reactor, that's our new treatment, our new biological treatment process. That is the heart of the new treatment process. And then the second video, that was the last piece, that is where we're adding air to the treated water before it goes back into the Elkhorn Creek. So there is dissolved oxygen in there, and we're not putting water with, with no air in it back in. We want the fish and all the biological, all the animals to be able to breathe, so that's kind of the first and the last steps. And I will point out that, so our first connection, and that is from the Kane Run pump station, has been made. I will say that it has been made. All we have to do is start opening the valve, and we're going to do that very slowly and very intentionally. It's ready to go. I could go out there and press the button, we could do that right now. The contractor has said, as long as they will let us, the water that you see in those tanks, that's a combination of plant effluent, which is clean, stream water, and potable water from a hydrant, that we've filled all of these structures, and then we're circulating water. He said, the longer we will allow them to circulate the water, the more confident and the better they will be when we start introducing the real deal, the wastewater from Kane Run. But we are ready. They just want as much time as I will allow them, which will probably be through the end of this week. And then, then I'll say, nope, we're opening the valve, but we will do that very, very, I will say again, slowly and intentionally, but we're here. And so it's exciting. It's been a very long journey. This is one milestone, project's not done. I'm still going to be bringing you pay apps every month. I think they'll finish up next year with, that'll be everything related to, we'll go next to, wow, I'm going blank here. blank here, substantial completion, then we'll do a punch list, we'll do that for, I forget the contractual amount of days, then they go to final completion, then they're done. But, the process is ready to go, the remaining items, biggest ticket item will be site paving, and I will say, you can anticipate me bringing you a change order for that, bid the project four years ago, pavement increase, pavement index has changed in four years, so we will have a pavement change order, that'll be the biggest remaining change order. That is within, well within our project contingency, so we're not concerned about that, that's expected on any multi-year project like this. I think that this milestone marks, we have very carefully, I give a lot of applause to our, applause to our board on how carefully they have managed the remaining capacity at our existing plant, and they approved this past Tuesday, three new projects, three new availability requests, we have seven left on the waitlist, and I imagine over the coming weeks or months, we will whittle that down to nobody on the waitlist. And again, I think that's the update for where we are, but we recommend this, and we're excited this month that we can be at this point, payout number 54 on a long project.
You have a question?
You have a question, I mean, you have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, on the paving, are you going to be able to do that before they close the plants for winter?
I don't know, I know they want to get the rock base and everything up to the paving, I don't know if, I haven't heard yet if they want to do the paving, I believe they will try, I know they at least want to get the base down so we're not operating in mud all winter.
Right. Any other questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
No moves.
Motion made by Ms. Hamburg, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of motion for duty construction for $389,967.89, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14, City Engineer, Eddie's going to come up, item A.
Mayor, can I ask Chase a question?
Sure.
Could you respond to the meeting that the doors were locked or whatever?
Sure, I'll just start by saying, pointing out that I've distributed information regarding that situation to this council, to Mr. Holman, to the news graphic. We had an employee that got up, locked the doors before the board was gone. It shouldn't have happened, it was an oversight, I shouldn't have let that happen, but it We have additionally, we've, again, we send it out annually, as you all get it, we get it at the same time, but the open meetings, open meetings, open records guide, and the guidelines with, that gives you all the examples, it gives you all that training, I actually, thankfully Devin pointed out that there's actually been a newer revision to that that I need to resend, and then Les Jarvis is going to address that at the outset of our next meeting. Additionally, Glenn Williams called and said, if it's an issue, we'll call a specially called meeting this week, and we will go through every bit of business again. I will say nothing of, there was no part of any discussion that involved any action, and we can do the whole thing, we can offer whatever we want related to anybody that was talking after the meeting was adjourned to put that into some formal record. I don't really know what else to do, it happened, it was not intentional, and we can do whatever else to make sure that that's not happening again, and that we rectify that situation.
First of all, thank you, Chase, for addressing that issue, and also informing us, next steps, what you did and so on, and even I saw that even on Facebook, so you're out there, what you all did, and I appreciate the fact that you were being transparent, and then people know exactly what happened, was unintentional, and your next steps going forward, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 14, which is the City Engineer Municipal Order for Marshall Park Sewer Line Construction.
Thank you all. So, this is for the Marshall Park Project, the restroom addition onto the concession stand building, and there's two parts, the first part is the sewer line extension, there's an extension that has to be made up to the site from the bottom of the hill where you enter the Lacy River Pool, the Suffollette Pool, and on the back, and then up the hill. And I want to thank Chase's group very much for, we're using their contractor and their bidding process, their unit price bids, and they did a really thorough job helping us with that part of it, so I want to thank his staff. And there was a substantial savings between, if you compare the four bids, between the high and the low, by their methodology, so I would ask for approval of the sewer line extension part of this project.
Thank you, you have heard the request, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Minke, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of item A, Municipal Order for Marshall Park Sewer Line Construction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Item B, Municipal Order for Marshall Park Restrooms and Storage Facility Construction.
Yes, and so this is the second part of the project, this is the actual building construction, and it's an addition to the concession stand building that's already there at the site. We did receive a substantial reduction in the cost of the project by bidding it the second time, if you compare the first round of bids to the second round, so that was a good thing, and ask for approval of the building.
You have heard the request.
Sorry.
Do I have a?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hamburg, are there further questions and or comments?
Comment? It seemed, as I was talking earlier before the meeting actually started, to the mayor and Kim about how high that is, I mean, that's a half million dollars with the sewer and the building, basically that's a half million dollars for a 14 by 16 building, isn't that about the right size of it, a 44 by 16?
That sounds about right, I have to go look at the plans.
But you all said tonight that that's a lower bid than what you received before, so things really gone up that much?
It's competitively bid, you know, we advertised it publicly and put it out, so.
That's just my comment, it's too much, but I understand, that's the lowest bid, wow.
And the fact that they put it out again was something in itself, so I mean, why did they take the first one, they took the second one? So, are there any other questions? All those in favor of the motion for the Municipal Order for the Marshall Park Restroom and Storage Facility Construction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item C, Municipal Order for Clubhouse Bridge Design Services.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this, as you recall, we applied for a grant, a KYTC grant, received the grant for the full 100% amount of the construction costs, but we didn't have, it doesn't cover design plans, so in order to bid the project, we have to have plans prepared, and this contract, we also competitively bid this one, was, is for that component of the work, the engineering planning.
Okay, and also, just to refresh your memory, counsel, this was the grant for $342,010.10, which was awarded to us, to the state, so that to me is significant, and that pays for the whole construction of it. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion made by Ms. Hamburg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Mitchell, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for Municipal Order, Clubhouse Bridge Design Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item 15, Finance Municipal Order for Items for Surplus and Disposal.
Yes, just, we have a few technology items, this is just kind of the first batch, there will be some additional ones as they go through, old technology items that have been in storage to kind of get those out, anything with any kind of data on it will either be wiped or have the hard drive removed before surplusing, so.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Brent, do I have a second?
Second, Ms. Brent.
Second made by Mr. Chris, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for the items for surplus and disposal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item 16, Fire Department.
I'm helping these guys out, so I'm just going to stay up here for the next couple items.
Okay.
This is related to purchasing anyway, so, as we've gone, or come to council before to ask for a couple of cooperative purchasing resources, this is one that the fire department has researched and found, KCTCS, the Kentucky Community and Technical College System, they do a lot with fire departments across the state, and they do have their own cooperative purchasing, they go out and competitively bid some contracts, and in your packet you have a list of the contracts that they have competitively bid that fire departments across the state of Kentucky are able to use, and there's some things that Chief Johnson's been looking for that this would help him procure a more competitive price than we can get just on our own, so, and then we just included a sample of the form that we would submit to KCTCS as we utilize these contracts.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mitch Mitchell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You up here again?
I am.
Item 17, Municipal Order for Change Order for the Verkata Camera System.
Yes, as the police committee has already heard, they're finishing up the installation of the security camera access system at police department, and this was a request to add an additional camera outside of the evidence locker room that had not been included in the original plan, even though the change order is below the amount that would normally require council approval, this little bit wasn't budgeted, it is part of the budget amendment for the next time, hopefully it'll be approved, but, so we need your approval to proceed with the change order and finish that project up.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sames, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Minke, are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item 18, Council Discussion, oh business. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think probably all of us in the past week received some correspondence from a lady, a concerned citizen about the cemetery upkeep, you guys got that?
Yeah.
I think if, I remember correctly, a few months ago, she sent us all correspondence about that as well. She's very concerned, as you all saw the letter, about the upkeep at the Georgetown Cemetery, she gave a list of concerns about, I don't know, very recently, did you all also receive an email from the Georgetown College Soccer Coach about looking for opportunities to volunteer for his team? Okay, well, maybe I was the only one that got it, he sort of, when he sent the email, it kind of looked like it was intended for all of us. With your permission or guidance, I think it would be great if maybe we reach out to that coach and talk about maybe seeing if there's a way to allow them, as a community project, to go out and work on the cemetery, if you think that that's a good idea. If not, maybe we.
Well, again, you know, we have to look at that, and I'll get staff to work on that because you have to look at also, when you get people to do work, you got insurance things you got to do, and so that's, you got to keep that in mind, you just can't let people just come working there, and if something's torn up because they're doing something, they chip somebody's gravestone or something like that, it becomes an issue, so we'll look into that and see what we can do, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say that I think all of us, I took that very seriously, that letter, and when she wrote before, and she contacted me as well, because I'm on the unification committee, and it would be nice to give her some sort of a response.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually have a meeting with Gene over at the cemetery Wednesday this week, he obviously received that correspondence and has corresponded with that citizen many times, so I'm going to go meet with him, just talk through some things, do a walkthrough and just provide a status update to the council, because I know you all received that letter, I was made aware of that recently, so I will get you all an update on that, and stay tuned.
Okay, all right, any other oh business? All righty, out with the old, in with the new, so we got new business, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, last week, I brought up during our housing meeting about a hotel that I think would be really good to explore, potentially purchasing, and really, that's based on the housing report that we heard, that was presented, the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Prevention Report discusses the need for additional units and potential use for repurposed buildings. So, I'd like to propose that we explore this opportunity, as well as future opportunities, and keep those on the radar. I can provide staff with the information about the hotel that is for sale, and I'd like to ask that you assign staff to look into it, maybe conduct a feasibility study to see if that might be something that we could move forward with.
Okay, so ordered, okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Any other new business? All right, council comments, I'm going to start with, since you want to roll down there, Mr. Chris, I'll start with you.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. Sames.
Mr. Mayor, you did a fabulous job today with your State of the City address, that's not, sometimes that's not easy to do, and to, but you did a very good job, except you do not understand what a skunk is, but other than that, there's a Kentucky term for it, and your wife was right, so just remember that.
And for six months, she reminded me about that, so there you go. Better be smart than to be right, okay, all right. Mr. Minke.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to mention one other item from the KLC Annual Meeting. One of the things that they had in the Exhibition Center for that was a manufactured home. They actually had the home inside the Convention Center, and had it outfitted completely, they had representatives there, and some development folks that had truly implemented this, so I did take some time to spend with them and look at some opportunities of being able to make that connection as we go through this housing report, and develop the action plans in addition to what Michael's talking about, ways for us to reduce the cost of developments. Just that manufactured home that was there, three bedroom, two bath, very nicely apportioned, was about $160,000 is the cost of that unit, it could be placed on a foundation, it could be placed with underpinning, depending on what you have, so there are some economies of scale and some examples of things that they've done, so I think it's worth having some conversation, and those folks are willing to come and meet with a group that maybe is addressing the housing study as being able to explore some options there. These homes, you know, these are the same types of homes that are built down in Florida in the communities down there that have the protections for hurricanes and all those kinds of things, so, you know, it's quality. The other neat thing about it is, when you look at a number of pictures, you can't discern which one is a stick-built house versus a manufactured home.
And if you would share that information with me, and so, and we can, I get that to staff and so on, and see with Candace and so on, and see where we can go from there.
Sure, but that's just a number of things, there were a lot of different conversations that we had, you know, some of the other conversations center around unused properties and things like that, how to maximize the usage of those kinds of things, with some best practices that are out there as well, so.
Thank you.
As those things come available, we can share.
And if you could share that with us, we'd be appreciative, and we can get that ball, that star rolling. All right, excuse me, Ms. Hamburg.
I want to thank.
Yeah, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the kind proclamation for Dr. Hambrick. That means a lot to me and to our family. So, thank you very much. It's always good to see some of these long-term projects kind of turn the corner and come to a bit of potential completion. And I'm really glad that the water company is, got the beneficial use completion and it's ready to be operational. So, thank you for all that hard work. It's been a long time coming, but we're at the finish line. And, you know, also, some of these other things that we have put into a long-term thing like the Oxford Road and so many other things, we're finally, and even City Hall, we have the horizon in sight now. So, it's exciting. And Mayor, I thought you did a good job today and represented the council and our priorities well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Brent?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Hampton?
Okay. I'd like to just, the stone fence out in front of Whitehall cleaned up. It looks very nice. If you need to go out there and drive by it, it looks really nice. So, thank you public workers for that. And is there any plans to continue down towards Kainwood or?
We had done it.
Oh, really?
Estate.
Do you think it's estate?
Yeah.
Sixty.
Four sixty.
Oh, I thought. Yeah, that's why I didn't know the state had done it. So, you know, anyway, it looks good.
Well, we will take, Chief Boone will take the credit for that.
Thank you. Go on.
All right.
Now, is there any intent on finishing or not?
We can check.
Okay. Okay. Second, Stacy, good job on the detail tonight for the budget amendment. That was very clear and understandable. So, thank you.
All right. Last but not least, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you again for today. That was, it was nice to attend and you did a great job.
Thank you.
And then, I wanted to say thank you too for Michael and Karen and Kim to, for volunteering to get in the weeds on this complicated subject that we all are interested in. So, we look forward to your work there and getting back and keeping us up to date on what's going on. So, thanks for doing that.
All righty. If there's no other business to be bothered for this council, we stand adjourned. Thank you.